And Board Member Klobuchar, would you be willing to administer the oath of office to the new members?
Yes, I would. I. Raise your hand. I. Wendy Sanchez. Having been elected. I have been elected to the office of school board member. To the office of school board member. Swear that I will support. Swear that I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially. And will faithfully and impartially. Discharge the duties of said office. Discharge the duties of said office. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, we will have the election of the officers. We will begin with the election of President of the Beloit Board of Education. The new president will preside for the remainder of the meeting after selection. At this time, I open the floor for nominations for the office of President. Are there any such nominations? Dr. Anderson Levy.
I'd like to nominate Lori Endress, please.
Board Member Endress has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Third request, any other nominations? This time, I will close the nominations for the election of President. Because there is only one candidate selected, it would be the will of the Board if you choose to do this by acclamation, by a hand vote, or by ballot. Is there any such desire? Hand vote consensus? At this time, all those in favor of Lori Endress, serving as the President of the Beloit Board of Education, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, seven to zero. Lori Endress is the new president for the Beloit Board of Education and will preside over the remainder of this meeting.
All right, thank you very much, and we will just simply continue on. So I would like to take nominations for the position of Vice President.
I nominate Chris Klobuchar.
Do I have any other nominations? Third question, do I have any other nominations? All right, if that is it, and it's the will of the Board, are we ready to vote? Do you want to hand vote, ballot vote, vote, hand vote? Okay. Go ahead and hand vote. All those in favor of Chris Klobuchar for Vice President? And it's unanimous. Okay, second nomination, I'm calling for nomination for the Office of Secretary.
I nominate Michelle Shope.
Do I have any other nominations for the position of Secretary? Seeing none, third and final call, do I have any other nominations for the position of Secretary? All right, if we're ready to vote, are we in agreement, hand vote? Okay, all those in favor of Michelle Shope for the position of Secretary? And, and it's unanimous. Next position, I'd like to call for nominations for the position of Treasurer.
Shelley Cronin.
I have Shelley Cronin nominated for the position of Treasurer, any other nominations? Third and final question, any other nominations? All right, we have Shelley Cronin nominated for the position of Treasurer, all those in favor? Hand vote? And it's unanimous. Final position, do I have nominations for the position of Clerk?
I nominate Wendy Sanchez.
Have Wendy Sanchez nominated for the position of Clerk, do I have any other nominations? Third and final question, any other nominations? Okay, we have Wendy Sanchez as nominated for the position of Clerk. We're going to hand vote, all those in favor? And it's unanimous. Okay, so I am ready to go ahead and do Board Appointments, Michelle, are you, are you ready? If I am, okay. So for the CISA II rep, I would like to appoint Wendy Sanchez. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Wendy Sanchez for the position of CISA II rep. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have Wendy Sanchez as CISA II rep. So Michelle, I'm going to move on to, to the committee appointments. And I just need clarification, do I appoint the members as well? Okay. So for the Curriculum Chair, I would like to nominate Chris Klobuchar. Do I, do I have a nomination, actually, I would like? I just appoint, I don't have to vote on these? Perfect. Okay, so I would like to appoint Chris Klobuchar for Chair, Lisa Anderson Levy as member, and Pam Charles as member. For finance.
Excuse me, is that to curriculum?
Yes.
I would decline that because that usually meets early, I'm not going to be able to do that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do I have any volunteers for a second? Committee?
Right now, that meet, that committee meeting begins at 4:30, but there is some flexibility. Although, you know, what it will mean is that other committee meeting, or maybe we can make another committee meeting earlier. Change the arrangement of the, of when committees meet. So Pam, if that would help you, we could certainly move that around.
Are you open to?
Oh, yes.
Moving it around? Okay, that's fine, wherever, wherever you want to put me, as long as I don't have to be there at four, 4:30.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with Pam Charles on curriculum. For Finance Chair, Shelley Cronin. Members Dennis Baskin and Wendy Sanchez. For Policy and Personnel, Chair Dennis Baskin. And members Lisa Anderson Levy and Chris Klobuchar. For the Agency, WASB Delegate Pam Charles. WASB Alternate Chris Klobuchar. RCA A, Chris Klobuchar. Liquor Commission, Wendy Sanchez. Library Board, Shelley Cronin. Employee Relations, Shelley Cronin. The Merrill Community Revitalization, we put that on hold. Ad Hoc Diversity, Wendy Sanchez. And Ad Hoc Academic Achievement, Lisa Anderson Levy and Chris Klobuchar. Any questions on that?
Excuse me, President Endress, I think it's important to tell the audience why we're putting the Merrill Center on hold, it's not because it's not important.
Correct, let me clarify, the reason that we decided to put that on hold is because of the changes at the Merrill Community Center, and that not being active, not that, that's not an important position, or that we don't want to fill that, but it's not actively engaged at this point in meeting. So if that changes, we would then go ahead and appoint a member to that. Thank you, Dennis. If there are no other comments or questions, do I have, I would like to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. At 1:20, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have an approval for the agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda's approved. Dennis, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, can I please have announcements?
Okay, that would be me. On April 26th, the Quarter Century Induction will take place at the Rotary Center. Congratulations to the nine employees being inducted this year. You're welcome to join the Fruit and Intermediate School, April 26th, starting at 12:45, for their multicultural fair. Please come join fun on Saturday, April 29th, for the McNeil Color Run. This is a fundraiser you will not want to miss out on. Starts at 10:00 a.m. at McNeil Intermediate School. Night of Distinction Gala will be held on Friday, May 5th, at the Eclipse Center. Tickets are still available to purchase, please see Jenny in the front office at the Colak Education Center, if you need tickets. Prom will be held May 6th at the Eclipse Center. Please consider coming out and supporting any one or more, any one of our many athletic events being held over the next month. You can find the schedules on our website, under Beloit Memorial High School, in the Athletics tab. The students always appreciate the support. Thank you, this concludes the April announcements.
Thanks Wendy, Chris, Shelley, and I would like to invite you to come and run the color run with us. We will, or maybe walk with us, depending on how fast we'll decide to go. So the next thing on the agenda is recognitions. And we have none tonight, so I'm going to move on to Item C, Citizens or Delegations. Our citizens may speak on business action items, as these items are called, oh, I'm sorry. Areas of interest not included on the agenda, so we'd like to invite citizens to speak if there are any items, or any areas of interest not included on the agenda. Citizens may speak on business action items as these items are called by the Board President. Do I have anyone who wants to speak? So before you go, I have to read this paragraph, okay? Members of the audience, the Board of Education is now at the place on the agenda where we will receive public comments from citizens or delegations on areas of interest that are not on the agenda. The Board of Education will generally not respond or act on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Appropriate items will be referred to Administration or one of the Board's committees. Citizens wishing to speak on one of the posted agenda items may do so as items are called by the Board President. While the Board and District welcome public comments, we as a Board also must ask that you exercise care in your comments that relate specifically to District employees or persons connected with the school system. In order to protect rights of these individuals, and in the interest of complying with open meetings law, on prior posting of items for consideration at this meeting, the Board reserves the right to uncomments on such topics. The use of specific names of District personnel may lead to legal liability on the part of the speaker. The Board would also remind the public that the Board has existing procedures in place to dispose of legitimate complaints against staff members and persons related to the system. Persons desiring to speak should come to the podium and give their name and address before beginning to speak. Each person is asked to speak no more than three minutes.
Thank you, President Endress. And first of all, congratulations to everybody, and this is like a new start, so it's going to be easy, easier tonight to be positive in my comments, because I see a new Board up here, and I, like other citizens in Beloit, are looking for a fresh start, for many obvious reasons. But I'm going to keep this positive, or try to keep it positive. I'm here as a proud parent of students that went through the Beloit Schools. I'm a community member now, and also a very proud Purple Knight. I guess this is purple, right Tom? Sure, okay. Again, thank you for your service, all of you. We've got some good people on this Board, all of you are, are good. But I implore you to work together, now and in the future, for our children, our, our asset, our strongest asset. One area I wanted to talk about, and I'll keep it under three minutes, so I'll be brief. In talking to principals and other school personnel, and they retired now, we have seen a problem with the discipline. And years ago, numerous principals, community members, parents, and students got together, and we formed the code book. And I don't know if it's still in play or whatever, we have a code book. Level 100, 200, 300, and 400. Now, we had a 3M form, carbon form filled out by the teacher, if there was an infraction. As a principal, I would look at it and make a decision. If it was possibly an expulsion hearing, it went right to our hearing officer, who was Lori Medina. And she would make a decision, sometimes she'd say to the principal, you can handle this, there, I'd handle it this way. But if a hearing was to be held, she made the decision, with her strong background as a probation officer, lawyer, et cetera. Then the decision was made at the hearing, with the principal there, and the student, and his or her parents, to maybe take it before the judge. It was Judge Henderson, now it's Judge Holland. But those decisions were made without interference. And one thing concerned myself and others as principal. If we expel a student, we're going to probably see that student at Walmart or somewhere else. They're going to be expelled from the schools, but... But after a while, if that teacher is consistently there for them, they'll develop a real strong bond. Nothing is more important in that school, based on the research, than the individual teacher making that connection. So folks, we can't lose anymore of our good teachers. I've been alarmed by that the last couple of years. So let me conclude by just saying, the schools are the community, and the community is the schools. And again, congratulations to all seven of you. We've got our superintendent back, this is like a new day. Let's go forward, working together. And I wish you well, I wish our District well, for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments, as well as your wisdom. The next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. Our standing items from the Assistant Superintendents will return next month. This month, however, I decided that I would speak on a few key topics from my office and give them the night off. First, I would be completely remiss if I did not thank those who stepped up while I was on leave. I appreciate the Board of Education, the Cabinet members, Dr. Williams, who filled in under challenging circumstances. I am here tonight to thank the community as well. The outpouring of cards and plants and prayers was at times very much overwhelming. I can say unequivocally that for the healing, those things do matter. I am blessed to work in such a community and school district. When you face your own significant health challenges or mortality, it has a way of changing you, and you quickly learn to appreciate some of the more mundane and routine things in life. I want you to know, as some of you on the Board have commented, it's clear that I feel very good, maybe too good. I feel very invigorated to do the work that needs to be done for our students and our families. And so tonight, I wanna talk about just a couple of things from my office. The business at hand is in the present. It is necessary now. A recent Journal Sentinel article pointed this out acutely. A report from the National Conference of State Legislatures, which is a bipartisan group, correctly pointed out that students who have only the basic skills are in deep trouble. Additionally, top-performing countries ensure that students arrive to school ready to learn. Let me say that again, arrive to school ready to learn. In such countries, if the family cannot, or will not, provide those supports, society does step in. Recently, our District hosted Dr. Depeche Navsaria, who was a leading pediatrician at UW Hospitals and Clinics. He's also the project director for an early literacy initiative. The presentation was fantastic, and our staff really benefited, based upon the feedback. According to UW sources, reading is not simply a nice activity or a developmental stage. Even in our modern digital world, the most efficient and effective conveyor of ideas is text. If you look at turnaround research, it says, "Start with literacy." We have a socioeconomic vocabulary gap in this country. By age five, students from poverty often have heard thirty million less words than their more affluent peers. According to an article from Jessica Leahy from The Atlantic, when a child is deprived of food in this country, there is public outrage. And this is because child hunger is correctly identified as a moral and an economic issue that moves people to action. We believe that the poverty of vocabulary should be discussed with the same passion as childhood hunger. Dr. Navsaria pointed out that the first thousand days of life are the most crucial. As brain pathways develop at lightning speed, it is critical that students have rich environments at home, in the community, and any care setting that they may be in. I've been reading on this topic vigorously for the past year, and frankly, I'm tired of reading about it. While I certainly do not believe schools can solve every societal problem that we are expected to by so many, I more than concur that it's time that society and Beloit steps in. Beloit must step forward. It is my fundamental belief, based upon all I know, that the School District of Beloit has to be the leader in this community and take this conversation to a new level of action. I am announcing this evening that from the Superintendent's Office, I will aggressively be pursuing answers, solutions, and outreach to specifically aim at the first thousand days of life in our community, before they come through our doors. If you start the race way behind the pack, it is a lot more difficult for our students to catch up. This community and the District must be resolute in ensuring that our students start at the same line in the race, as much as humanly possible, of their first day of four-year-old kindergarten. In the coming months, I will be seeking Board approval for outreach initiatives that involve our local health system, partnership with UW's Early Literacy Project, program management to work with local business, the area public libraries, state-line literacy, area preschools, our District kindergarten staff, the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation, and many other community partners and committees. If we truly want to get serious about closing achievement gaps, I am more than convinced than ever that it begins the day a child is born in this community. Think Harlem Children's Zone, and the work of Jeffrey Canada, and the commitment to coordinate best-practice programs to give our children and families from birth onward. Further, the opportunity to build citywide culture rooted in success, passion, and teamwork is key. While we will not be able to solve some of the quandaries of our geographic location that brings us great transancy here in Beloit, I believe we can make a difference, as we as a community understand the obstacles and shed light on the solutions, no matter how unconventional. According to the National Assessment of Adult Literacy, only fifty-seven percent of adults in the United States can perform moderately challenging literacy activities, such as understanding the last sentence that I just read. For school-aged children in the U.S., they manage to only be in the middle of the pack in international comparisons of reading. Achieving effortless reading, a love for reading for all is one of the great societal undertakings of our time, according to the Center for Early Reading. And I couldn't agree more. As my office begins further research and action to be taken up in the near future, I ask all of you to come along on this journey. It is no longer sufficient for us to learn from research, learn from speakers, and leaders on this platform, only to sit back and hope somebody else takes the lead in our community, simply because the youngest among us have not reached the age of entrance into school into an antiquated agrarian calendar system. I want to commend the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation to taking new approaches with extending summer school, curriculum analysis, and classroom observation fidelity checks that involve scores of people around our District. Recognize the problem, and you are on a path to your solution. Community partners, please feel free to contact my office as we embark forth, and know that we will contact you. In closing my remarks, I would like to thank the Ad-Hoc Academic Committee that continues to meet and generate ideas for all things academic. I would also like to thank all of the stakeholders from our community and District that participated in the strategic plan process. This plan will be presented to the Board of Education no later than the second Tuesday in June, and will serve as a key roadmap for the District going forth. We recognize our challenges in the School District and our community. However, I am reminded of a conversation I had standing yesterday on a playground with one of our principals. The principal said, after we had talked about many serious matters and challenges in education, there was a lull in the conversation for a moment, and the principal said, "Tom, look around. Sometimes perceptions cloud reality. This really is a great place." I challenge those who may have skewed perceptions about our schools to call my office directly at three-six-one-four-thousand and come on a tour of any of our schools. We have incredibly dedicated staff members, dynamic and curious students from all walks of life, and families who want the best for their children, no matter how tough life's challenges may be. Beloit is a great place, and if you disagree, then I say, "What part of the solution are you?" It's time we put the real work of what we should be doing in this community and this District front and center, and I thank you in advance for your support. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, it's good to have you back.
It's good to be back.
We have missed your passion and your compassion, and I think I can speak confidently for the Board that we are ready, willing, able, to do some things differently and make a big difference in our kids' education and their reading skills, so, thank you.
Excuse me, Dr. Johnson. What was the name of the, because I'm sure people in the audience won't hear this, the first thousand days, you said, "Doctor," who was it?
Um, Depeche Navsaria.
Spell that, please.
First name is? D-I-P-E-S-H, last name is N-A-V-S-A-R-I-A.
Thank you.
You bet.
And welcome back, sir.
Alright, we do not have our student Board Member Delegate here. Is there an alternative report? Okay, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, is the Equality Committee Report.
Good evening. I would just like to just give you a highlight of the last meeting that we had, which was very interesting and very engaging. So at the last Equality Committee meeting, we talked about the history and purpose of the Equality Committee meeting, especially with the rise in conversation around diversity and so forth. We had a very engaging conversation about what diversity means and the role that it plays within, inside of our School District. We had a lot of conversations and groups, table group discussions with adults and also students, who talked about how important it was to see teachers who looked like them. So as we constantly recruit new teachers and staff members to our Districts, they wanted us to constantly keep that in mind, and how important that is. We also had a conversation about discipline inside of our schools. And in one conversation that we had within the community, that was the first thing that came out of someone's, the first topic of conversation. And I would just say to anyone out there who's watching, you know, "I won't believe everything you heard about me if you don't believe everything I heard about you." This is important, because we have our parent walks, because two years ago, when we arrived here, that was one of the conversations that came up. And I tell you, we have parent walks each month, led by Tasha Bell, to specifically dispel some of those type of myths that are out there around discipline and things that are going on inside of our school. And I echo what Dr. Johnson said. You are more than welcome to also call my office as well, and also to participate in some of those parent walks. And I can't tell you how many times we've heard from parents who said, "That's not what I read about in the paper. That's not what I heard about." Well, and that's why it's important to come and see for yourself the great things that are going on inside of our School District. And don't let someone else's perceptions become your reality. Very important. We also talked about immigration. We also talked about the parent event that we had on the twenty-second. So we're thankful, we're very thankful for everyone who participated in that event. We also talked about the event that is coming up on May the fifth. You've heard me talk about this event many times before, at every Board meeting probably for the past year. So at this point in time, it just makes us real proud to be able to recognize a Teacher of the Year from every school in our District, a staff member, two students, and a parent. Right now, we have close to three hundred people who have signed up and have confirmed their attendance. And Friday will be the last day to purchase tickets for the event. And like I said before, this is gonna be a wonderful event. And to all of our honorees that were printed inside of the Daily News tonight, we honor you and we say thank you in advance, and pending your questions.
Do I have any questions?
I actually don't have a question, I have a comment. So thank you, Dr. Williams. I think we are all aware of the research that says that it's important for children to have teachers or administrators in their buildings who look like them. But there's also research that says that when there are teachers and or administrators of color, white students also benefit. And I think that we often miss that little piece of the research. And I just wanna point it out to the audience that it is not only the case that students of color benefit from diversity among teachers and administrators, all students do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Thanks, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item on the agenda is Committee Reports. So I'm looking for a Committee Report from Finance, Transportation.
Finance, Transportation, and Property met on, excuse me, April eleventh. We were in and out in fourteen minutes. I think thirteen of those minutes was devoted to a discussion about the Foundation. The Foundation, we had to make a decision whether or not to continue, and I think we decided we definitely need to continue, try to get the Foundation active again. We talked about trying to revitalize it, maybe combine it with an alumni-
And I can't tell you how many times we've heard from parents who said, "That's not what I read about in the paper. That's not what I heard about." Well, and that's why it's important to come and see for yourself the great things that are going on inside of our school district. And don't let someone else's perceptions become your reality. Very important. We also talked about immigration. We also talked about the parent event that we had on the 22nd. So, we thankful... we're very thankful for everyone who participated in that event. We also talked about the event that is coming up on May the 5th. You've heard me talk about this event many times before at every board meeting probably for the past year. So, at this point in time, it just makes us real proud to be able to recognize a Teacher of the Year from every school in our district, a staff member, two students, and a parent. Right now, we have close to 300 people who have signed up and have confirmed their attendance. And Friday will be the last day to purchase tickets for the event. And like I said before, this is going to be a wonderful event. And to all of our honorees that were printed inside of the Daily News tonight, we honor you and we say thank you in advance. And pending your questions.
Do I have any questions?
I actually don't have a question, I have a comment. So, thank you, Dr. Williams. I think we are all aware of the research that says that it's important for children to have teachers or administrators in their buildings who look like them. But there's also research that says that when there are teachers and/or administrators of color, white students also benefit. And I think that we often miss that little piece of the research. And I just want to point it out to the audience that it is not only the case that students of color benefit from diversity among teachers and administrators, all students do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Thanks, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item on the agenda is committee reports. So, I'm looking for a committee report from Finance, Transportation.
Finance, Transportation, and Property met on... excuse me, April 11th. We were in and out in 14 minutes. I think 13 of those minutes was devoted to a discussion about the foundation. The foundation, we had to make a decision whether or not to continue. And I think we decided we definitely need to continue, try to get the foundation active again. We talked about trying to revitalize it, maybe combine it with an alumni committee. I know we've got a lot of ideas, the people on the foundation. Some are not here anymore, and the other members are current board members. So, I would look to the audience that if anybody is interested in assisting with that from the public, I would certainly appreciate some helping to revitalize the foundation. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Next up is Curriculum and Instruction.
We also met on the 11th. We took a little bit longer than 11 minutes, though. We actually had several different things come to us, several different course changes, proposals, and materials. So, we approved youth options for the first semester next year. We had a computer course, applications change. It went from a term course to a semester course, which will allow our students to get Microsoft Office certification. We approved and are recommending full board approval for AVID. AVID stands for Advanced Individualization Determin... Individualized, pardon me, Determination Program. It's a course that teaches organizational note-taking and other skills to help students be more prepared and successful in advanced placement classes and advanced-level coursework. It's specifically targeted for students of low income, first-generation college students, minorities, or students that have B.C. averages or less than a 3.0. Let's see, that was one. We approved a course modification to the fashion design course in the high school. We also approved several and are recommending approval to several different math materials. So, we looked at Go Math in grades 5K or 5... kindergarten through fifth grade. Big Ideas in ninth through 12th, which is the geometry, algebra, algebra II. We also are looking at or have approved the K-5 Do the Math and sixth grade through ninth grade math. 180 for interventions next year. Let's see. We approved a college and career readiness half-credit course for the high school. We also looked at and had some information provided to us by Mrs. Andre in the high school that talks about high school academies that we'll be looking for more information on in the future. And I was going to ask Mr. Bonds if we had anything else, but he slipped out. So, that was about it, but it was a longer meeting than usual.
Thanks, Chris. Next up, Policy and Personnel Committee Report.
Nora Guard was the chair, but she's no longer on the board, so I'll do it for her, be in the new chair. Is that okay, President? You're welcome. The Policy and Personnel Committee met on March 21st. There were consideration for policies for first read, which was Policy 166, Board Member Request for Information. They also considered Policy 166 Rule 1, Procedures for Board Members for Request of Information. Want to have a formalized process in the request of information, and that helps with the organization of our stellar Human Resource Department. Policies for second read, the committee looked at Policy 141.2, which is Board Officer Duties for Final Read. Looked at Policy 185.3, Policy Personnel Committee, and Policy 225.1, which is Administrative Staff Evaluations, and Policy 481, which is Student Work Permits for Final Read. There were no personnel recommendations to the Policy Personnel Committee, and the committee talked about the 2016-2017 Equity, Retention, and Recruitment Plan. And the committee suggested that the plan go back to the superintendent's office for review, addition, subtractions, and submit it to the board at a later date. The Policy Personnel Committee met on April 11th. At the meeting, there was a health service presentation. There was more in-depth discussion about the 2016-17 Equity, Retention, and Recruitment Plan. And there was consideration for a number of policies for first read, which was 181 Rules for Order. And there was a layover of Policy 522.8, which was Dress Code for District Employees. There were a number of policies for second read, which were pretty much discussed in first read. And the committee looked at 554 Administrative Support Staff Evaluation, which was deleted. They discussed some personnel close session items. And the last thing, our superintendent gave a legislative update indicating that currently, the governor's budget looks pretty favorably to... for an increase in for K through 12 funding. He didn't promise anything. I guess he was just more hopeful. So, those are the meeting minutes for the Policy Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm down on Agenda Item Number 7, Consent List. Please note that all items listed with an asterisk will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless board member or citizen so requests, in which event, the items will be removed from the general order of business and considered in their normal sequence on the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? All right. We are on to Business Action Item. I'm down on Number 9, Item B, which is District-Wide Printer Copier RFP.
Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next item, C, Budget Amendments. Do I have a motion? Move Approval. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion pass. Item D, Youth Options First Semester 2017-18. Do I have a motion? Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, Computer Applications Course Change.
Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. AVID New Course Proposal. Do we have a motion?
Move Approval.
Second.
I have a question.
Dennis?
We had a good discussion in curriculum. The dollar amounts, Mr. Bonds, did you... Were you able to talk with Jamie? Jamie, will this be in addition or will this be absorbed with no overages for the budget? Yes? Okay, so, will that... For the next year, would that cause any overages in the budget? Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item G, Fashion Design Modified Course Proposal. Do we have a motion?
Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Chair Endress, can we consider H-I-N-J? Because I have a couple of questions together.
Sure. I will take a motion to consider H-I-N-J together.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay. So, Mr. Bonds, I had the discussion with you as well about... On the Curriculum Committee, I move approval... I moved approval under the condition that we'll know about the money. So, Jamie, these were large budget items. I think... I believe all three of them was over $700,000. I know you said that you would find the money in the budget. Would it result in an overage, a shortfall for next year? Or is it within the budget allocation?
It's within Anthony's budget allocation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item K is AVID Implementation.
Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, College and Career Readiness Grades 9 and 10 New Course Proposals.
Move Approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item M, Policy 181 Rules of Order First Reading.
Madam President, is there a way for us to move the policy items M, N, O, P, Q, R, S all together?
Absolutely. Do I have a motion to move items L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S together?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve items L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, and S? No? Okay, sorry. So, I'm just... Be a little patient with me on the first night. I will appreciate that. We're down on Item T? T, Personnel Recommendations.
We do have one change to the personnel recommendations that our HR Director, Ms. Salas, will discuss.
Okay. It is a request for leave. The initial CH has requested that that not be voted on this evening. She wants to ensure that that is the proper move for her career.
Any questions?
Move Approval with the deletion of the recommended staff person.
Do I have a second? Oh, question?
From amendment that we also are moving approval of what came out of committee, which is in our book, not the paper that was delivered here. So...
I understand that. It's the...
So, the last administrator is being removed?
Yes.
Okay. And now CH is being removed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Move Approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We're down on discussion items. Are there any items of interest for consideration at future meetings?
I would like to request that we have a recognition of a citizen. And I did email Dr. Johnson about that. And I'm hoping for June, because this person needs a couple of months or, you know, a little leeway to prepare. And I'm also hoping that... I think Jamie plans on bringing back the third-party exit interview... Okay. Topic, and I will be out of the country in the business meeting in May. So, I'm hoping we can have that in the special meeting in May on the 9th.
Okay. Any other items for discussion, Dennis?
Chair, I mean, President Endress, we welcome Dr. Johnson back. Would... I would be remiss if we didn't publicly welcome Wendy Sanchez to the board. Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other items for discussion? Okay. I would like to... I'm sorry, what?
Could we also have Nora come back in May or June or whatever for recognition? All right, thank you.
All right. Any other items for discussion? Okay. Announcement of future board meeting dates. Committee meetings will be May 9th, 2017. Finance, Transportation, Curriculum Instruction, Policy, and Personnel. The next business meeting will be May 23rd, 2017. And I would like to adjourn this meeting. Oops, sorry.
I think it's important to note that with the new configuration of the committees, that one of these committees might move its meeting time before they meet next time. And that will be advertised as it always is with plenty of time for community members to attend.
Thank you, Lisa.
And the last thing that I would like to do publicly, I would like to thank Dr. Anderson Levy for her great leadership as president for the board. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I would like to adjourn this meeting.